All right. Do I have a motion to return to open session?
Second.
Ms. Franklin and Dr. Roundtree, any discussion? Ms. Stanley, please call the roll.
Ms. Bond. Ms. Franklin.
Yes.
Dr. Gitry.
Yes.
Ms. Parton.
Yes.
Ms. Purcell.
Yes.
Dr. Roundtree.
Yes.
Mr. Hudson.
Yes.
Seven in favor.
Motion carries. Do I have a motion to certify closed session that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification applies, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered?
So moved.
Ms. Purcell and Ms. Franklin, any discussion? Ms. Stanley, please call the roll.
Ms. Bond. Ms. Franklin.
Yes.
Dr. Gitry.
Yes.
Ms. Parton.
Yes.
Ms. Purcell.
Yes.
Dr. Roundtree.
Yes.
Mr. Hudson.
Yes.
Seven in favor.
Motion carries. Do I have a motion to readmit Student A?
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Purcell and Ms. Parton, any discussion? Ms. Stanley, please call the roll.
Ms. Bond. Ms. Franklin.
Yes.
Dr. Gitry.
Yes.
Ms. Parton.
Yes.
Ms. Purcell.
Yes.
Dr. Roundtree.
Yes.
Mr. Hudson.
Yes.
Seven in favor.
Motion carries. Our next agenda item is a public address. We welcome the opportunity to hear from students, parents, employees, and community members about education matters in this community. As a reminder, the board sets aside 30 minutes to start a public address. We have the option to extend in 30-minute increments, which Ms. Stanley will remind us of. If there are additional speakers after 90 minutes, the board will continue with their business meeting and hold one additional 30-minute session at the end of the business meeting. The clock continues for applause and disruptions. The more disruptions there are, the fewer speakers who get to address the board. I will call each speaker up by name in the order that they signed up. Each speaker will have three minutes to address the board. The board does not respond to speakers during public address. The screens will show when the speaker has 30 seconds remaining and when time is up. Please state your name, in the area of the county you live in, and the first speaker tonight is Kimberly Williamson, followed by Bob Beard.
First, I agree with Ms. Bond that school board meetings are too long. It is very difficult to sit here and remain engaged when the agenda can go on for hours and hours and sometimes more hours. I think more community members would be encouraged to take part if the meetings fit into a more reasonable timeframe. So why are they so long? I do appreciate that when items are brought before the board, you share your discussions and your questions about them publicly, even echoing public concerns expressed to you. We, the community out here, need and appreciate as much transparency as you can give us. However, if the meetings take so many hours, then maybe we ought to consider that the government of the schools is just too big. Just like our federal governance was intended to be left mostly to the people, maybe we should be asking ourselves, what are the core things this board should govern, and what are the things this board should remove from their hands, with responsibility placed back into the hands of families, who can then seek out or even create the community resources of their own choosing? Second, why does this board continue to push policies that are clearly illegal regarding DEI? I am not talking about a political opinion, but the clear determinations of the U.S. Supreme Court based on civil rights law, preferencing a person's race directly or indirectly for any purpose outside of the two purposes specifically allowed by the Supreme Court rulings is flat out illegal. To paraphrase, those two purposes are in conjunction with prison riots and remediation of a specific past violation of law, such as the 1960s integration of schools. Neither has any bearing on what you are doing today in 2025. Even if you thought your policy pushed toward racial balancing in the areas of school discipline, hiring practices, class enrollments, grading practices, the teachings of the White Privilege Conference, et cetera, even if you thought those were appropriate in legal and right, it is very clear now that they are not. These practices and policies are ultimately harmful to students of all races. Instead, you should be focusing on policy integration in line with what has now been clearly expressed to this school board in multiple ways that is legal, appropriate, and right, and that is not racial balancing or preferencing.
Thank you. Next up is Bob Beard.
Good evening, Bob Beard. I live here in Christiansburg. I guess I want to start off, you know, I know Dr. Braggin's, like, this is his last school board meeting and talk about his legacy and stuff, and, you know, recently, there was a principal's retreat, I guess, MCPS principals were here, and I guess racism is so systemic in this county that we sent the DEI department, the Equity Department, to two white privilege conferences, but that wasn't enough. We had to bring Dr. Moore in for the principal's retreat, for 20 principals to learn about white privilege for themselves, what racism is, whatever it is. We've asked over and over again, love to see how our county is so racist, if you would please define, you know, why the parents, why the students, why this administration, who teaches, where does racism occurring, okay? You know, we spent $90,000 to bring Dr. Moore in. You know, we had the Equity Department come up here back in March and say, hey, we're going to change our name, we're going to keep the same mission statement because racism is so strong in this county. You know, we were below average on SL scores, you know, 30%, you know, below reading level, 47% on math, or vice versa, I can't remember which way. Anyways, you know, if that's our legacy to, you know, have declining enrollment, below average on all the scores, and all those issues, we implemented SCL for the school curriculum, I don't understand any of you guys being up here, you know. You know, what I like to ask everybody to do, everybody in Montgomery County, go home, read the book of Genesis, understand the great deception Satan has put in front of us, that our body, our choice, and what Satan did to deceive Adam and Eve, and the Garden of Eden, to make you think that you're equal to God, and you're able to do the things you want to do, and there is no crime, or punishment for trying to be nice to one another and let anything goes. You know, to allow kids in our school system, that furries are no big deal. You know, allow kids to dress up like cats and dogs, just like furries, and that's no big deal. To have kids who, you know, share bathrooms, you know, it's just enough issues. I ask everybody to read the book of Genesis, and then also, if all possible, if you can consider homeschool your kids, get them out of MCPS school system. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. And with that, our public address is closed. Next up are consent items. If no one wishes to move an item out of consent, we will consider these items approved.
If all possible, if you can consider homeschool your kids, get them out of MCPS schools.
I do want to highlight a donation that we received from a private individual and community organization, a donation towards our McKinney Finto Liaison Group. Thank you very much for that. Okay, next up, do I have a motion to approve the payment of bills as presented?
So moved. Second.
Ms. Franklin and Dr. Roundtree, any discussion? Ms. Stanley, please call the roll.
Ms. Bond.
Yes.
Ms. Franklin.
Yes.
Dr. Gitry.
Yes.
Ms. Parton.
Yes.
Ms. Purcell.
Yes.
Dr. Roundtree.
Yes.
Mr. Hudson.
Yes.
Seven in favor.
Motion carries. And that takes us into our business meeting, and we will start with a report from the superintendent.
Thank you, Chair Hudson. First off, I'm pleased to share that Montgomery County Public Schools had a very smooth and successful opening for the 25-26 school year. Our students and staff quickly settled into their routines, and it was great to see the energy and enthusiasm in classrooms across the division. The work of our administrators, teachers, and support staff was evident in the preparation of the buildings, the readiness of the instructional programs, and the extremely welcoming environments created for our students. I would like to extend my sincere gratitude to all of those who contributed to that, making this year's opening such a positive start to what I'm sure will be a great school year. The schools that I got to visit as quickly as I can in the week we've been open or so, it's really been exciting. A lot of great things are taking place, and one of the things, I want to give a compliment to two people. Our Transportation Department has done a great job, and I've said this to the start of every school year, because in my past histories as superintendent, that was always a time of stress and making sure everybody got to school on time and all that, and our people do a great job, from our bus drivers, to our coordinators, to our director, to everyone that works there. So thank you for all of that. And then to our facilities people at every level, the buildings, the grounds are in really great shape, and that's a testament to our director, Mike Brown, and all the people working under him, and the support staff, the ground staff, the maintenance people. You know, an operation as big as this doesn't happen by accident, where everything falls into place and on the first day of school, everything went as planned. It didn't. But many of you didn't hear about any of those problems because our staff did a great job in triaging and getting things done, and our facility people did a really phenomenal job with a couple of large projects that were taking place that weren't 100% completed by the start of school, and for the most part, you know, we didn't know about it because they took care behind the scenes. So I just wanted to thank them publicly for doing a great job. And I only have one other thing that I want to mention, and it's related to one of our partnerships in higher ed, and this is a grant from the Virginia Department of Education regarding clinical faculty partnerships, where we're working in partnership with Radford University. This grant is a competitive program that funds collaborations between school divisions and approved colleges or universities with their teacher preparation programs. Its goal is to strengthen and support systems for educators at the very start of their careers. Through the grant, the cooperating teachers who host and guide early field experience interns and student teachers, as well as mentors who work with new and provisionally licensed teachers, allows them to receive specialized trainings in various instructional methods and educational pedagogy. By investing in our mentor development, the grant helps ensure that both pre-service and beginning teachers gain the skills, the confidence, and professional guidance they need to transition successfully into full-time teaching. We are grateful for this partnership, which will enhance our profession and help provide more qualified teaching candidates, and we also have several of our MCPS graduates currently enrolled in this program at Radford University. I wanted to share that because that's just one of the examples that we do with our partnerships with higher ed and the county and the surrounding communities, and it's a testament to Dr. Dunleavy and all his work in kind of coordinating those efforts in that position that we created last year. And I happen to know at least one of our school board members has a child that's in that program, and it's one of those things that we greatly benefit from being around higher ed institutions, and I'm grateful that we're able to tap more of those resources than perhaps we did in the past. That's all I have, sir.
Great, thank you. Any questions or comments for Dr. Braggin?
I'm just talking about the school starting. I would like to give a shout out to Auburn for dealing with the roof issues, and as good as they all were, and we got it resolved, and I'm thankful for that, and everybody that's dealt with the Christiansburg remodeling, and I think that was a success as well. So just, I'm blessed to be able to represent two very, very good parts of our county, along with the rest of the county being wonderful as well, but I'm just blessed that I represent two that are very, very passive, and I'm proud of them.
Okay, great. All right. Next up, Katie Seidman, our MCEA president, who will present an update from the Montgomery County Education Association. And just as a heads up, so this is the normal time when MCEA would present at our working session. We had you at the last meeting because that was a makeup from previous meetings, so.
Thank you.
We're seeing you twice in a row, but that's not usual.
Well, I appreciate it either way. Good evening, everyone. My name's Katie Seidman. I would like to present you the report on behalf of the Montgomery County Education Association. First, I am absolutely thrilled to announce that MCPS employees were able to begin the 25-26 school year with active collective bargaining agreements in place for all of our employee groups. This is a huge win for employees and for MCPS as a whole, and it sets us apart from other school districts in our area and shows that MCPS is a place that respects and supports its employees. We have been recognized by our state affiliate as the only local in the entire state of Virginia to have active contracts in place for all three of our employee groups. I would like to thank you again for your continued support of collective bargaining. Your support has allowed things like freedom in lesson planning, protected planning time, protected meeting times, protected time outside of school, comp time tracking for our support staff, supervisors who are able to also go home at a reasonable hour, safety and health benefits, or, excuse me, safety and health guidelines that help keep our support staff safe. So thank you for all of that. Again, we are consistently being recognized by other districts, asking us how we're doing it and if we can help them do it, and I appreciate your collaboration as we continue with collective bargaining. I would also like to, as we go into this new school year, thank the board for a few things. First, the compression of the salary scales for all full-time employees, not just 10-month staff, teachers, quote unquote, but for all full-time employees. This transition is a great thing for all of our staff and will absolutely help with recruitment and retention. Specifically, I talked with one new staff member at NTO who said he came to MCPS from his previous school district specifically because of the compression of the salary scales, knowing that he would get to the top sooner and make the most money longer with MCPS. So it is working, and I fully believe that it will continue to work. So thank you for supporting your staff in this way. I would also like to thank you once again for not having premium increases for our health insurance benefits as we go into this new year. Most of us recently just signed up for our health benefits, and we are very happy to see that there has been no increase in premiums. So thank you for that, and I would like to continue to show our support for the initiative to build our health insurance reserves, which I know that is a priority for you all as well, so that we can continue to not have an increase in health insurance premiums, because as we have discussed many times, an increase in premium with a raise does not equate to a raise at all. I would also just like to plug in that we are very happy with the change to Delta Dental as it relates to our health insurance. It's a better coverage, and we don't have to pay as much for it, so thank you for that. Again, we appreciate the opportunity to address the board at this time, and I look forward to your questions.
Okay, thank you very much. School board, any questions from Seidman? Great job.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up, situations may occur when the division superintendent is out of office at a time when his or her signature is needed. On such occasions, persons other than the superintendent may be authorized by the local school board to sign documents. Do I have a motion to appoint the interim assistant superintendent as the superintendent designee?
So moved. Second.
Ms. Bond and Dr. Roundtree, any discussion? Ms. Stanley, please call the roll.
Ms. Bond. Ms. Franklin. Dr. Gitry.
Yes.
Ms. Parton.
Yes.
Ms. Purcell.
Yes.
Dr. Roundtree.
Yes.
Mr. Hudson.
Yes.
Six in favor, one opposed.
Motion carries. Next up, legislative policy revisions were presented as a first read on July 29th. The policy revisions are presented tonight for approval by the board. Do I have a motion to approve the legislative policy revisions as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Dr. Roundtree and Ms. Parton, any discussion?
Yes. So I would ask that policy 5.4-4 be pulled for a separate vote. I expressed my concerns about this policy two weeks ago, three weeks ago. When it comes to professional development, it seems like this is a roundabout way of trying to hamstring districts to be able to implement professional development as we feel it needs to. feel it needs to be implemented.
Can you clarify that, that policy number, just to confirm?
4 point, I mean, 5.4.
5-4.
4.4, right.
5-4, is that correct?
Right.
Okay, right, sorry. Okay, so we have a motion and a second on the floor. Would the motioners, that was Dr. Roundtree, would you accept a friendly amendment to pull that one separately?
Sure, I'll adjust my motion to approve all policies as presented with the exception of 5-4.4 to be voted on or to be excluded from this and discussed at a separate motion.
And Ms. Parton? Wait, who has a second?
Ms. Parton.
Ms. Parton.
Ms. Parton.
Do you accept that amendment?
Yes.
Okay. What else?
A couple of things. One thing, and I apologize I wasn't here for that, our last meeting. As I was going through, I noticed that there, the ways in which code was referred to was inconsistent. I don't know if, my suggestion is to make it consistent, so sometime, just the way it's referenced changes from one policy to the other. And also, you know, typically when there's a prevailing code or administrative code that is referenced at the bottom, and in most instances, those references were included, but I did notice more than one, at least, that they weren't. And so, I don't, it seems to me that we would want to be consistent in those references and how we reference the code. So, I was also going to propose a friendly amendment to address those two issues, but before doing that, I wanted to find out if there was agreement that we should be consistent. And I can explain a little bit more, I didn't want to get into too many details.
Are there just a couple places specifically, or is it kind of all throughout, or?
It's, I went through multiple policies, and sometimes it says VA code, and it notes the code, other times it just references it differently, and then one time, it doesn't even, it just has section, it doesn't say what the actual, what it refers to in one of the documents I saw. So, it wasn't just like one or two, it was multiple places. And I think it's in part because things being amended over a period of time, but even in some of the amendments, and another thing I noticed is that sometimes it refers to school board, the other time board, there's just, I noticed several inconsistencies across the policy and just some of the language. I'm a kind of a consistency guy, but I just noticed as I was reading, it was inconsistent, and it was more than just a couple of places otherwise, but, yeah.
What do we think, board? Do we want to? I mean, I guess, like, in order to review that, we need to have somebody go through and kind of scrape it all and make it consistent, right? There's a good chance these aren't the only policies that might not be consistent, right?
Right, right. It was only because there was language that we were adding, so I'm not suggesting we go through all of them. If we want to wait until there's a review of all the policies, that's fine. I just, as I was reviewing, I noticed it was inconsistent in these three ways, or two ways.
I think if you have the notes, and it's not actually any egregious, or any errors to the policies, we can go ahead and give the notes to the lawyers and make sure that they clean it up as appropriate to the inconsistencies, and then next time we're voting on policies, or whenever they get that cleaned up, we can re-vote on it.
Whatever it is for the will of the board is, whether to wait or to just amend to make these three areas consistent, but either's fine.
What's the board's preference on that? Start with you, Dr. Roundtree, since you weighed in there.
Oh. To approve as-is and provide the lawyers that are drafting the policies with those comments and have them update them, and we'll bring them back for amendment or approval at a later date.
Well, we wouldn't even need to do that. We could still approve but amend with the exception of making consistent references to code, references to the board, and ensuring that references to code are included in the reference section. So, it would address those three issues, and we could direct the administration just for this consistency, because it doesn't change any content. I don't know that we would need to actually go through and have a separate consideration. I think Tosh, I asked if it was permissible to do that, is that correct?
Yes, you did. And yes, according to Robert's rules, you can do that. You could make, if you accept that motion to amend, to approve them as presented with the exception of the code being consistent.
Could the administration do that pass if it's just a consistency kind of check, like, without having to engage the lawyers? Or it feels like a easier path?
I'm sure we could, yeah.
I mean, if it's not changing, changing anything other than just consistency, right? So.
That works with me. Don't know if we're going around or not.
Yeah, so I mean, I guess it's still your motion. So, you can either choose to accept that amendment or not.
Okay, so, new motion to add on consistency with policies and phrases directed towards the board, and what else?
Code references.
And code references. There you go.
And Ms. Parton to you? Okay? Okay, anything else? Okay. Clerk, are we happy with our motion?
It's pretty long, but I think we've got it. Do you want me to read it back to you?
Yeah, if you don't mind.
Okay.
Just to make sure we're all voting on what we think we are.
Okay. To approve all policies as presented with the exception of policy 5-4.4 to be pulled and voted for a separate vote, and to add on consistency with policies as directed to the board and with Virginia code references.
And the reference, so the reference section, but also to the references to the code or prevailing laws in the codes, in the policies themselves. So, it was just three, it was three issues there.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. There's no other comments or requests? Ms. Stanley, please call the roll.
Ms. Bond? Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Dr. Goodtree?
Yes.
Ms. Parton?
Yes.
Ms. Purcell?
Yes.
Dr. Roundtree?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Seven in favor.
Motion carries. Okay, and then separately, can I get a motion to approve policy 5-4.4?
So moved.
Okay. Dr. Roundtree and Ms.?
No, because I was going to make a change.
Do we want to do that before the motion, or?
Yeah, well, I was going to make a motion about the policy.
Okay.
I'll pull my motion.
Okay, yeah, there you go. Yeah, that's easier, thank you.
Now?
Yes.
So, I make a motion that policy 5-4.4 remain the same as it has been without the changes that have been put before us.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Can we please kind of informally go over exactly? I know we have it in front of us, but for our attendees and for anyone at home, what exactly we're asking to be left out?
Not asking for anything to be left out, I'm asking for it to stay the same as it has been.
What we're not adding to include, I'm sorry.
Can we pull it up and just?
So, anything that is highlighted and read and underlined as a change be omitted, and everything that has been lined out be re-submitted for this policy.
So, I understand, can I ask a question? So, I understand you don't want to change it, but can you explain?
So, I explained during the last meeting.
Yeah.
And I was, didn't want to have to extend the meeting any longer, is to say that I believe that the changes to this policy is nothing more than an attempt to make sure that we're not asking anything related to professional development that would include DEI, or anything that would help to support educating folks about their biases, or anything that helps support all of our students and our faculty and staff. Because the way I read this policy, that's what it does. If it's not directly related to instruction, and I asked the question of the attorney, then what does that exactly mean? And it was vague. So, for me, it's just an in-run-around. No, that doesn't directly, as we hear from our speakers constantly, it doesn't matter because racism is not real.
So, item 10 in the list, so I'm just trying to get down to where we are. Is there issue with item, with a, or in the list above, there's an item 10 right there. Is there an issue with that addition?
I am saying I don't want any changes made to it. What is in place right now has been serving us well, and we need to just leave it alone. And if Ms. Parton has something to say, I wish she would say it to the whole board.
Ms. Bond was asking me a question on the policy. Yes.
I guess I'd ask if the administration has any opinion on the matter?
We didn't really weigh in on this policy. You know, this was the legislative updates that the school board attorney looked at, what the legislature had approved, and then amended their policies as they saw fit. So, we haven't really weighed in on these.
I understand what you're saying as far as autism, but I believe that we do make sure that our staff and our support staff are trained, because that's something I have been asking for for years, including this year when there was a miscalculation or something where our support staff wasn't going to be bought in before school, before school started to do training.
Can I make a comment? So, I understand your concerns about the professional development and DEI, but we've talked a lot about mental health and not to pass this policy at all when there's something included in here to clarify our responsibilities and the district's responsibilities. Does it make, not to include that when there's another issue, doesn't make sense to me. So, it would be, I'd be more amenable to not, to removing that specific language in that section and still passing the other changes to the policy rather than just not passing it at all. Because it would, to say that we're really concerned about mental health of our students and for the general assembly to help to strengthen that and to direct school boards to add certain requirements, and for us just not to respond to that, it's hard for me to support that.
So, what were you suggesting?
So, that section 10, that whole paragraph that's been added in response to legislative changes to make those changes to the policy. So, that's, that would be on page two. So, I see the part where you're talking about the other professional development, but right before that, on that page where it says 10 each year in communication, et cetera, that's in response to a different mandate. And I don't see any reason why we wouldn't respond to that mandate. So, I would suggest either amending the motion to pass with the exception of excluding the language in the no public elementary where it's, what you're seeing right there in the second half of that page.
You're talking about number 10?
I'm saying pass number 10, but not the lang, because the language that you have a concern with is below that.
Right, so you're saying include number 10, that's what you're saying?
Yes, yep, exactly.
Ms. Franklin, will you accept that amendment?
I'll accept that.
Okay. Dr. Roundtree?
Yeah, I accept that.
Okay. Okay, so then our motion would be to include section 10 or item 10, but exclude the revisions after that. Any more discussion?
I just have a question. Is there not a way, I understand the concern there too, but is there not, what I'm reading, in my opinion, could speak to many other issues of non-academic training activity. I understand the concern of the bias position there, but would that not fall under if there's a need of academic or curricular duties or instructional learning how to benefit children, how to work with children? To me, that would open the door there, but I also think in the future, we don't know what non-academic training activity could come down the pike, so to speak. Someone could want teachers to go to a non-academic training on, I'm just going to be silly here and say how to make sundaes, or, you know, so that's a very open venue in my book. It's not, it's not just saying one certain issue, and I understand that that could pertain to that maybe, but it also could pertain to many other issues that I have to say I do support, that we don't have professional development on non-academic training. I think a lot of teachers would feel not needed, maybe taking the bias training out, or maybe taking something like that out of this certain comp, does anybody follow what I'm trying to say? I mean, it could, there could be many, many other things that, is there another way to word that? I guess is where I'm going with that.
I have a follow-up question that I think kind of relates to Ms. Bond's statement. What does, what falls under the parameters of non-academic training, and how many of them are required of teachers? Because as an educator myself, learning how to reach my students, because they come from all different kinds of backgrounds that are different from me, I would consider that me, I, I would consider that related to instructional and academic duties that I'm responsible for.
And I agree. You would see it that way, but there are other folks who would absolutely say, no, that's not a part of it, and why should I have to be bothered with that even every five years?
I guess my question is, could there be a, an extent, exactly how you put that statement, could that statement be a caveat, so to speak, in that somehow, that professional development training on learning how to, however you said it, just now, I just did it really good, you should have written it out, because that, that was, right, but exactly. I mean, is there a caveat that that could be put in there as well?
Can I ask a question of the administration? So, there are categories given for professional development, for different kinds of professional development. What category would professional development fall under if it were training to address, say, sexual violence, or to address mental health? Because part of what's being added is about professional development related to autism. Like, is there, is there a category being excluded from that list that would cause concern? Because we're not aware of the different categories for professional development. And I understand that some people might have concerns about, about some D E I-related professional development, but is there other professional development that doesn't fall under just curricular or the, the shortlist that's given here?
It's a great question. And I think from my perspective, what Ms. Purcell said is, almost all this falls under instructional. Like, what do I need to do to meet children's needs, whatever that may be, right? And that includes S E L, that includes some training on diversity, that includes some working with microaggressions. Because in my mind, as Ms. Franklin said, that's maybe what we think, but what does everyone else think? I'm not sure of that. So, the majority of all the P D we take is academic, curricular-based, instructional-based. There is some that's required by the state and the federal government, you know, for dyslexia training, for some child assault prevention training, and awareness on child abuse signs and symptoms, mandatory reporting kind of stuff, C P R training every 10 years. Like, there's things that we have to do to maintain certifications that are totally separate from that. But I think the way this reads, that would be exempt, as I read it. Like, the mandatory trainings for certification and stuff like that, you have to do regardless of what this policy says. I hope I answered that, Dr. Goodry. I'm not sure I did, though.
Yeah, you answered it, although I don't know if it addresses the, the fundamental question of, that's been raised here. So, excluding mandatory, is there, is there other sort of professional development that, that some people would not see as curricular or instructional that you would, that they would say, well, I don't have to participate in that, even though it's valuable professional development, say, around, around mental health?
Even if there was something like on self-care for teachers, right? That's important. But is that instructional, academic? You could argue both ways.
Right.
So, can we ask what is, what is the professional development that our teachers are required to take now, to give us more of an idea of what, what we're looking at?
I, I can get that. Off the top of my head, I don't want to give you a list because I'd probably omit some things and miss them. But there's requirements that we have to do every year, and there's requirements we have to do every so many years.
Because in fairness to the board, we really don't, discussing this policy, we, I'm, I'm at least in the dark about what is technically required professional development. So, until we get that, I think I would feel more comfortable tabling this policy until we got more information.
We'll have a motion in a second.
Is Ms. Parton saying she wants to table it? Are you making that motion?
I am, yeah, I am, if that's the will of the board.
Well, if it's, if it's, a motion has been made to table it, that's it.
Oh, I didn't know I had that power. I table it then. How about that?
We still need a second and a vote on, on, on the tabling, though.
You, you don't need a vote to table.
I, I do agree with that, because that, that's a very valid point to, yeah, it, we're, we're actually voicing an opinion on a policy that we really don't know what's required, or what our teachers are actually doing in professional development, so.
I'd like to see us have the vote, because that, I don't think there's any disagreement on item 10, and we could still pass that, but then direct the administration to enlighten us about what is required professional development and other sorts of professional development.
So, there was a motion to table it, and once a motion to table is made, it's tabled to a future meeting, if that is so desired.
Clerk, can we get a-
I think it still needs a second.
We went through this a few months ago, and I think I sent the chair and the vice chair the section of Roberts Rules on that.
Clerk, can we get clarification?
I believe according to Roberts Rules, you do have to have a motion and a second to table it.
And a vote of the majority?
Yes.
Right. It still requires a, I'm looking right at it right now, Ms. Franklin.
Go ahead.
Okay.
Whatever.
I mean, I don't think, well, okay. I trust my clerk. So, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any other discussion on tabling? Okay. Ms. Stanley, please call the roll.
Ms. Bond?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Upstained.
Dr. Goodry?
No.
Ms. Parton?
Yes.
Ms. Purcell?
Yes.
Dr. Roundtree?
No.
Mr. Hudson?
What the heck is the, what's the vote? Yes.
Okay. We have one, two, three, four, three, four, four.
Okay, so the vote should pass.
Two oppose, one abstained.
Yeah.
Yes.
So, motion carries. Okay. Yeah, I think that's-
Check for understanding. The administration was asked, though, to provide the school board with all the mandatory trainings. A list of that, is that accurate?
I think that's what I'm hearing, right?
Okay.
I mean, it would-
And the current policy is the policy until something changes.
Right. Okay. Sure. You know, in this case, I think it would be helpful, I would also ask, and maybe this is a question for the lawyer, but just to, to summarize what the changes are in here. Because as I read this, there's a lot of redundant language. The only thing that I see that feels like it's actually different is not exceeding 25 hours across those five years. Everything else is just kind of a repeat of the same thing. But if there's something else in there, I don't want us to miss it. Okay, so we'll bring that one back with additional information. All right. Next up, Dr. Mike Brown, our director of facilities, will give an update on summer facilities projects.
Good evening. I'd like to give you an update on our summer projects. This year, we had 20, 20 projects that we undertook this summer across all of our strands. They ranged in size and scope from major renovations, additions, window replacements, roof replacements, electronic school sign installation, paving, striping of parking lots, flooring upgrades, and classroom painting. Out of our 20 projects, we still have three that are in progress. Our biggest one, Christiansburg High School, that was a milestone, and we held our ribbon cutting there for the addition. And also this year, at the, we installed some lighting at C H S Stadium.
Yay.
We, we say- Um, we also had some roof replacements, Kips Elementary and Auburn Elementary Schools. As you can-
So, when we say stadium, do we mean?
I believe that, I believe that looks like the baseball stadium.
It was, it was baseball.
Yeah. It was, it looks like the baseball stadium. Yes, ma'am.
When they get that big, they're called lamps. I said, when they get that big, they're called lamps.
A roof replacement at Kips and Auburn, I gave you a before shot at Kips there, work in progress, and then an after shot there on the right, and Auburn Elementary. We also installed electronic signs at our schools, and we also added one to Christiansburg Middle School. That was an addition.
A question about these. So, Bellevue, Christiansburg Elementary and Auburn Elementary, are they going to be finished with the brick and?
I've actually had a conversation with our lead carpenter on that. I believe that's going to be a good fall project for them to work on. So, yes, ma'am, we, we are making plans to finish those out.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. We had some paving, resealing, and striping of our existing parking lots. One of our biggest ones there was the operations center. We have currently moved the buses back in there from the Wimmer property. You can see the picture there of our buses. Also, one of the ones that we did, not necessarily parking lot paving, but paving, was at Christiansburg Primary School in the back playground. There were some modular units there. And also, I believe that asphalt area that you see was in disrepair, so we have repaved that, and we have, actually went in and landscaped, reseeded, and filled in where the mobile units are, so the kids will have some additional play area there. Hopefully, the grass will start growing soon. Also, some additional projects, Auburn Elementary School classroom floor replacement. Also had some painting at Harding Avenue Elementary School, Kips Bathroom partitions, and the Kips Gym floor. The Kips Gym floor really turned out nice. I was impressed with that. Also, the Montgomery Central Window Replacement, you can see, I gave you a before picture and an after picture. That's a little far away, but it, it looks even better up close, but a major improvement there with the windows. Now, that is actually the first, Mont Central is the first phase. They're getting ready to start on the second phase, which is the operations center, the back side of the operations center. So, I've been in discussion with the contractor. We're, we're putting a timeline together to get that started. So, hopefully, we'll get that started soon. We have some projects in progress. Our Eastern Montgomery Track is at 75 percent. The weather has really impacted that. One of the things, we have to have pretty favorable conditions to put the rubberized coating down. And also, you know, we're, we're getting into football season, so we have to be really careful how we do that. So, been in, in discussion with the contractor, the principal there, trying to work out a favorable schedule. The Kips Fire Alarm Panel, that's actually pretty much 100 percent. We're just waiting on one test. It's operational, but just one test on that. Kips Playground, the equipment is there, and the contractor has started work on that. They're working on the, the foundation or the structural part of that and getting ready to install the playground equipment probably this coming week. Our fuel centers right now are 20 percent complete. They are, I gave you a before shot right there, that's at the op center. They're actually pouring the foundation for that. You can actually see the fuel tanks there. Those are custom-made double-walled tanks. So, I believe one of the reasons why you're going to ask, why are we only at 20 percent? One of the reasons is because I think we had a, a little bit of an extra lead time on those tanks, so they're being manufactured. The vendor is doing some work at the op center, putting in some fencing right now, putting in some bollards, and getting ready, I believe, to go full force on this project anytime soon. So, those are our projects, our 20 projects that we had this summer. Really, really looks good, really proud of them, and looking forward to wrapping the ones up in progress. Any questions? Can I answer?
I have a question. At the Professional Development Center, the field that's down below, what are, what are we doing with that?
Currently, right now, it's, they reseeded that. I had a discussion with Z M M on that. That is actually fill material. So, we're going to have to wait a while for it to settle to, to build, if we wanted to build anything on it. I don't know if that would be the case, but it certainly is appropriate to, you know, you could have practices on it. I believe sports teams in the county has used it as a practice area. So, it's, it's fully usable for that, so.
So, there are teams using that as a practice field because-
Not to my knowledge.
I was going to say, I know they used to, but I just kind of, I think maybe our Parks and Rec, I don't know, but maybe think that it's not usable. So, I didn't know if that's something that-
My previous conversa, my conversations were that it was previously used. I believe it could be used if, if so requested. I can check into that further and get more information back to Dr. Bregan if you would like.
Right. Because folks may not know that they can use it.
And that's what I was going to say, and I'm, I-
I'm pretty sure part of that process, when we got the permits and all that from the town, was that that field would be used for the Recreation Department, and that's why we wanted to maintain it. So, they may just not be aware that it's ready or done. So, we, we'll, we'll follow up.
And by no means has anyone approached me over it. It's just some community members has kind of said, hey, why, why isn't anyone using that big, great area that they used to use? And so, I just was referencing to, the Parks and Rec used to use it, but they have not mentioned anything. So, I don't want that to be a-
It's a good field and a good location and a, a good sizable field.
It was. It was great. And two or three teams could practice at one time, so.
Yes, ma'am.
I have a couple of questions.
Yeah, sure.
So, nice to see you, Dr. Brown. Thank you so much for, for your presentation. First, I wanted to ask about the roof at Kips Elementary. I know we got an email from the administration about the Auburn Elementary roof and some issues with that, but I had had some concerns shared with me that I had shared back with the administration, and I hadn't heard any follow-up about the mold concerns and other, other things that, at Kips Elementary.
At Kips.
Yeah.
We went in and did some air sampling and brought in an environmental firm. They sampled everything. Everything was with, within the limits. As a precautionary measure, we did some extra cleaning prior to school starting, just, just on, to be on the safe side. Took some air samples. I believe everything came back okay.
Great. Thank you so much for that, that follow-up.
Just as an extra update on Kips, actually tomorrow, we're meeting with Carlisle, the manufacturer, to warranty the roof out. So, we are pretty much 99 percent done with that. It just has to be warranted out, meaning they'll come in, the actual manufacturer of the roof membrane will come in, give it a once-over with our consultant, Terricon, and us, and any issues that they find will be addressed. But we're actually at the warranty part of the project on that. And I was also told that Auburn is progressing well now, and that they are making progress on that as well.
Excellent. Thank you so much.
Yes.
So, my, my other, it's more of a comment than a question. The board, for as long as I've been on here, which is not all that long, we have a, like a chart, like a spreadsheet of all the, the buildings in the county, and they are red, yellow, green, kind of depending on their, their needs, and that has been driving our renovation priorities. As far as I know, that's a relatively old document, and we had gotten a suggestion from the chair of the Board of Supervisors to have Dr. Bregan or a member of the administration request funding from the Board of Supervisors to do an updated engineering survey to kind of get a better sense of the, the landscape of kind of where all our facilities are falling and what, you know, how the- of kind of where all our facilities are falling and what, you know, how the priorities might need to be, be realigned in light of some of the updates that have occurred or, or haven't occurred. So I was just wondering if there was, if there had, if that request to the Board of Supervisors had happened or if that is in progress?
We didn't make the request to the Board of Supervisors yet, but what I did ask Dr. Brown to is contact them and the company that they use and get what that price and cost would be for them to do that. I believe we're still in that process.
Yes, we actually met with representatives from, from the town on their study that they did and got the information from them. Dr. Bregan and I have had several conversations about doing a facility study. I've actually reached out to another engineering firm that we've worked with before and started that conversation with them. So we're in progress of getting that started. Yes, you are correct, the facility study is, is dated and needs to be updated. So we are in progress of working on that currently.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
We can go ahead and go around. Dr. Brown, do you?
Yes, thanks. I'm glad to see that Kips has a hardwood floor in their gym now. Is, does that take care of all-
It's not hard, it's not hardwood.
Sorry. A solid, non-carpeted floor in the gym?
Luxury vinyl tile that looks like hardwood, it actually looks great.
Yep, yes. A non-carpeted gym floor. Does that, does that conclude getting rid of carpeted gym floors around the county? Or do we have any left?
I don't have that information. I'd have to, I'd have to check.
I believe that was the only gym that had a carpeted floor. There are still other carpets in classrooms that we're working on the process of getting rid of. Some at Kips, some at Auburn Elementary, off the top of my head.
Right, yeah, I knew Falling Branch had a carpeted gym at one point. I wasn't sure if it had been-
I don't think it does anymore. Now, now I got to check.
Okay, no more, okay. All right, cool. Thanks, that's good to know. And then, the fuel tanks, what is the, what is the projection on getting all of those done? Was that going to be in the fall, that all of those will be completed?
Yes, it's going to be in the fall, probably at, more toward the end of October, November first. Spoke with the vendor contractor who's doing the work and asked for, you know, an update. And that was the update I was provided due to the manufacturing or the lead times on the tanks. And I believe we had some permitting, he was working through some permitting issues as well. So I would suspect we're going to see some progress start here soon, probably in September. And hopefully, that will go quickly once he gets all the pieces in place. Will say, he has also done some training for our Transportation Department as well on the fuel tanks. So he's, we've actually done, he did, the vendor contractor did some professional development for our transportation, for our drivers on the new tanks. So we've got that out of the way.
And then, just my last comment, I know there's weather problems and whatnot, but the, that East Montgomery Track has been a long time in the waiting and whatever we can do to, to get that done for those kids would be great.
We're, we're pushing that as hard as we can. We've had, we've had some, some things we've had to correct. The contractor's been really good in correcting those. We want to make sure it's done and done correctly. Again, one of the things that we have to be really careful of and plan is the application of the rubber to the track. You know, they, we're starting football season. We cannot have folks go across that. They actually can lay a mat across it during a certain period. So we're, we're coordinating with the contractor. We've been in communication with the principals. So we're trying to work out logistically the, the right timing on getting that rubber applied. They've just recently finished up the long jump lanes. The asphalt's down. The fence will be going in probably within a week or two. We, we upgraded the fence around the track. They had to pull, pull the poles out as part of the track expansion. And with that, it just made sense to actually put new poles and new tops in, reuse the mesh, the actual mesh fencing material. I was told that's going to be starting soon and I'm hoping that they'll start the rubberization soon as well. So that actually has a curing process. You have to have the right temperature, no rain. It almost has to be perfect. So I know the contractor's really concerned about that and we're coordinating with them on that project.
Thank you.
Yes.
Ms. Rinkin?
So I'll follow up with the track. So with the rubber, will that include the lines that are going to be on the track? Everything will be lined and it'll be set to go?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Dr. Gettrich?
Thank you as well for the presentation. Particularly pleased to see those new windows on Montgomery Central. They really needed it. I have a question that doesn't relate to the, the updates that we did, but I just want to follow up on something. Over the summer, GLE was used, the, the grounds were used to place equipment for other construction that was going on. And so there were questions about the state of the campus after the, after those vehicles had been removed. Was everything cleaned up to the administration's? Was the administration pleased with how that was wrapped up?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, what school?
So GLE was used, there was some construction, yeah, the, the campus was used for storing and, and for some vehicles during some construction that the town was doing. And so there were questions about the state of the, the campus. Did that all get cleaned up to?
I don't have any information on that. I haven't received any phone calls or complaints about that, but I can definitely check on it for you.
Okay, I'm, I'm sorry to throw it at you. I should have emailed in advance, but I just wanted to make sure that that had been cleaned up and taken care of.
I was there today, Dr. Gettrich, driving around the parking lot and it looked fine to me. I didn't, I wasn't particularly attuned in looking for those areas, but we will. And that might have been before Dr. Brown started. I know I led those conversations with the town administrator from Blacksburg, that the contractor had in the past just used the parking lot and didn't really ask anyone initially, just assumed it was okay. And we got assurances from the, the town that if there was any damage, it would be a hundred percent corrected. So let me follow up on that tomorrow.
Okay, and great. And, and, and I had heard that the town was responsive to the request, so in no way am I assuming that that wasn't taken care of.
No, no, I'm not saying that either. I, I, they were, they were great with us too. I just want to make sure that we did that. I was there today, I wasn't paying attention to it.
Yeah.
So I think I would have noticed, but let me check tomorrow.
Okay, great, thank you.
Ms. Farden?
So thank you for the presentation. You guys have done a lot of work in a short amount of time. And this is all stuff that we needed to have done a long time ago. Some of it, some of it I know has been recent. I am going to touch on the track again because the track is my baby for my district. I've been fighting that battle for a really long time, so I wanted to say thank you again for expediting that. And I know the rain has been terrible. And I know that's not good conditions to do what you want to do, but I'm glad that they are being very cautious in making sure that it's done right. And I know we had hit a little, a little, some complications there in the beginning to where some things had to be redone and that set us back a little bit. But if everything seems to go smoothly, and I think the cheerleaders still use the track, don't they, during football season when they're out there cheering? Don't they still need to stand on that? Or do they, do they stand on the field? I can't, with the track not being in the way it is now, I wasn't sure if they were planning on having them being able to stand on it or if they were going to have to be elsewhere. Do you know?
It might be a short period where they, they can't be on the track.
Right.
Once everything is in, cured and ready to go, I don't believe it'll be a problem for them to-
Well, it's going to be great and they so deserve it. They've been waiting so, for so long. Am I to assume that hopefully, we will have a track team that will be able to use that track in this, in the upcoming spring of the, this past coming up year?
That is my hope, yes.
Okay, perfect. And the windows look great at Montgomery Central, those were needed. And so the paving for the buses at the operations center, do we know, or do we have an expected date when we might can start getting those buses over there to be used? Are they already there?
Yes, yes, ma'am, they're, they're there right now.
Okay, okay.
If you look at the picture right there, that's an actual picture of the op center.
So we are utilizing that as of right now?
Yes.
Perfect, great. I didn't want to assume that from the picture, that's why I wanted to ask. So thank you for letting me know and thanks for all your help and your hard work.
Thank you.
Ms. Wong?
Okay, so that means all the buses and we're not renting another lot anymore?
The majority of the buses are there at this time.
Okay.
So it's my understanding that we are actually installing some parking blocks along the back. That's, that's on us. I believe they've been ordered. So once we get those in, we can start using the, just out of precaution, we don't want to use the back park, the back area of the lot. We don't want to hit the fence. So we're installing some parking blocks. Once we get that, we'll be able to get some more buses in there. And then probably more likely, the remainder of the buses would have to go to just individual schools to park.
Okay, so, but as a general rule, that, the renting of another separate lot will come to an end?
Yes. The answer you're, the answer you're-
Somebody would say yes.
You're asking about the property on Radford Road where we store the buses.
Absolutely, because I just think that's money we don't need.
We, we no longer need that for the school buses, but what we do need it for currently is it's the warehouse. Now, if you remember back in the day, we were renting two properties. The, the property on Radford Road and the property over Scatter Goods, which was a humongous warehouse that we were paying a lot of money for storage. So when we moved the buses to that property on Radford Road, we also have buildings there where we took the warehouses, the items that were in the warehouse and we stored them there. So we figured out the buses, now we have to figure out the warehouse materials, which is significantly less than it was because we had that, that big warehouse on Scatter Goods-
Right.
-that we haven't had in a year or two. But we need a warehouse place. When we get that taken care of, then we will not leave, need that property.
But that's acceptable, I can live with that.
And Dr. Brown was not aware of all that, so, sorry about that.
Well, you did good covering, you did good. Everything looks phenomenal. I'm so glad we've got our gyms with a floor that's not carpeted and the windows are amazing. I mean, coming down the road when I didn't know they had been in, it was like, wow. And of course, the high school and just every, in the parking lot, everything looks great and, and I appreciate everything that our group, your group has done. I do have a question though, years, or not a question, but maybe kind of a comment, but years ago, when we started talking about just our stadiums and our fields and, and we, we had talked about taking, examining all of our stadiums and looking at them and seeing if they were up to par. Because even though I know Eastern Montgomery's track is definitely getting the attention and was needed, not, from what I understand, their baseball field is, and Blacksburg's as well, are not in great shape. And so, and a lot of those are, are simple fix with having lamps put in. You know, we, we, I, I'm a believer, extracurricular activity is what many students not only keep coming to school for, but it's what keeps them interested. And a lot of students use our facilities. And it's not just a small, I mean, anyone can go and, I'm, I'm just going to use Christiansburg for an example, when there's girls softball, when there's soccer, when there's track, when there's tennis, when there's baseball and, and it, I mean, it's packed. And it's a lot of families and a lot of students that use those facilities. So we, little simple things that might not be that expensive, that we could fix to keep just better facilities. So have we looked at our stadiums? I know we, we talked about doing that.
We can actually include that into the facility study?
I mean, if, if the board is interested, I mean, I, I know as the buildings, we're looking at our auditoriums and, and I don't mean to lessen what happens as far as our music or our arts, but that's already getting looked at when we look at our buildings.
We can look at the stadiums. Usually with a facility study, you look at your whole campus, from parking lots to stadiums-
Gotcha.
-to any outdoor activity, as well as your indoor facilities. We can definitely put that on that, on the, on the list to include. But also, if there's minor things that need to be fixed, the ADs or the principals can make a request and we will do our best to accommodate that for them.
I've, I've heard in the past, just loads of dirt.
Yes, ma'am.
Simplicity kinds of things that could make, yeah.
We would be happy to take care of that.
A lot of times, it's not, it's not big ones. It's, it's, it's small things that make, make the fields a little easier when, when these groups are coming in and trying to keep the fields up, trying to keep the, the stadiums up to where they need to be. Maybe not football as much as baseball and tennis and soccer and things like that. So, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Great. And I had questions on the school bus parking lot, but it's already been asked and answered, so appreciate that. I'll just say thank you so much for, you know, for you and for all your team's hard work. You know, there's a lot of projects going on over the summer. It's awesome to see all the progress before the, before schools opened and, you know, you came on board during a very busy time. So, you know, congratulations, great job. But, um-
Thank, thank you.
Sure. Cue your mic.
Related to the operations center, so you said we still need storage on the Radford prop, yeah, Radford Road property. There was also an issue of tire storage. Is that been resolved? That they needed to be in a contained thing in case it was a fire or something?
I, I remember that. I don't know that off the top of my head. I don't want to put Mr. Walters on the spot. He's in the stage here. Do you, do you have that answer? Come up to the mic if you don't mind.
You don't get off that easy.
I mean, he's dressed so elegantly, I hate to waste it back there and not have him say anything, so.
There you go.
So currently, we're using a Conex trailer for that right now. At the operations, at the operations center.
Okay.
So it's actually housed there.
Is that sufficient?
It's not ideal, but right now, it's working.
Okay, so, it's going to push it here. So if there were to be a fire and it was in that trailer, that trailer would burn just like that versus a contained storage area that would contain a rubber fire? It's my understanding you had to have that and then you have the runoff with water to put it out and that kind of stuff. So do we not need some kind of special containment for tires?
The, the Conex trailer, trailer that we're using right now is, you know, solid steel, so.
So it's container, not a trailer?
Correct, I'm sorry. It's a container. I apologize if I said trailer. It's a, it's a, it's a, yes.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm good.
Board, any other questions? Okay, great.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, next up, Dr. Tom Brewster, our Assistant Director of Human Resources, will present a proposal to implement annual stipends for staff in the Operations Department who hold state-issued licenses relevant to their role in facilities and maintenance. Dr. Mike Brown, our Director of Facilities, and Eddie Walters, our Director of Transportation, will also be available for questions.
Good evening, Chairman Hudson, members of the board and Dr. Bregan. Tonight, we are presenting a proposal to help us reward and retain our skilled trade staff, the people who keep our schools safe, efficient, compliant through an annual stipend program. Our electricians, plumbers, HVAC technicians, mechanics and other licensed professionals are essential to our daily school operations and these licenses represent years of training and experience for these individuals. By offering stipends, we recognize the value, keep our expertise in-house and avoid the high cost of contracting this work out. We propose the following amounts for annual stipends for licensed employees. Master tradesman, three thousand dollars, that would include our electricians, plumbers and HVAC employees. Our journeyman tradesman, which would also include our electricians, plumber and HVAC, would be two thousand dollars per year. Our contractor license B would be two thousand dollars per year. Our contracted license C would be fifteen hundred dollars per year. The pesticide applicator's license would be seven hundred and fifty dollars a year. Our master ASE license would be a thousand dollars. And our inspection sticker certification would be seven hundred and fifty dollars. And it is important to note that only one stipend award for an employee and that would be the highest paid stipend. So this is our cost implication. We have six employees currently who are master tradesmen. That would be three thousand dollars for a total of eighteen thousand. We have two employees who are contract license class C for fifteen hundred dollars, which would be a total of three thousand dollars. And we have five individuals who have inspection sticker certifications and that would be a total of three, three thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. And the total would be twenty-four thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. Our justification is we want to- Our justification is we want to incent, provide incentives for professional growth and education, reduce our external contractor dependency, enhance our recruitment and intent, retention intercourse, and recognize high value credential among our skilled employees. This would be managed by human resources. We would do an annual verification of these licensers and we would reimburse exam fees for up to two hundred dollars, uh, for each license cycle. And finally, this is an investment into our licensed facility staff uh, to increase, of course, retention and to improve also recruitment for human resources. At this time, I'll ask the board if they have any questions.
Thank you. School board, who has questions?
I have a couple of questions. Thank you. So, the, the license and certification, are those required for the positions or can you, um, explain a little bit more? Because I'm, here's where I'm leading is, uh, if we want to incentivize, why not increase the pay? Because one of the things, it sounds like this, they would get the stipend annually, correct?
Correct. Or semi-annually, however we choose to.
Annually. Um, so, I know for, it's like for teachers, if you have a master's degree, you, you have, there is a higher rate of pay, correct?
Correct. It's a, it's an added.
So, why would you not do that for, for these individuals as well?
I think we thought it would be more intentional if we did it this way. Uh, for example, um, you know, adding a stipend would, um, you know, instead of putting it, embedding it in the salary would bring more attention to the, the, the pay and the stipend and what we're offering for licensure.
Okay. So, I, I greatly appreciate these individuals. Um, so, I have a couple of concerns. One is if it's just an annual stipend, you give it, but then you can take it away. And I'm not saying that that's, that's not a major concern. But if, if we want to reward, why would we not increase the pay for people who have the higher credentials as we do for other employees? Is there any reason not to, to do that? Because it's kind of a middle ground. It's like, it's good if you have them, but it, it, it doesn't carry the same weight as the, the, the pay scale we have for other employees who have advanced training and degrees.
I understand.
Yeah. So, is there any reason for not increasing the pay so that it becomes permanent and they can, uh, for those employees? And we're still incentivizing. So, if you have these, if you have the certification or is there, I mean, is there a concern that we could have an employee who has it, has a certification and then maybe drops the certification?
I, I think that's the concern. That's a concern that I had is if they drop the certification, then you're looking at revising their contract and, and lowering their salary. So, this also encourages them to keep up their certification. Like the applicator's license, it could run out. They could still be employed.
Yeah.
And so, if it's embedded into the salary, then it, it's a little different than having a stipend that can be taken away if they don't do what they're supposed to do.
Okay. I, I appreciate that. And that's one of the, the things that I was wondering about because I, I can understand why stipends would incentivize, but if we, there are lots of employees that don't have, there's not additional stipends available to them if they, you know, and I, I don't want to send the message, uh, a contradictory message like this particular employees, while you're really valuable, but other employees, well, you know, I just wanted to be mindful of that. But if you, if it's, if, if it is an issue of annual certification and we want to maintain that without requiring it for the positions, then that makes sense to have.
Certainly.
Yeah.
Certainly. And it's, and it's kind of like, we don't know the past history of the stipend program, for example. We, we, I don't have any historical knowledge of, if anything's ever been embedded in the salary, uh, because it's just not there, but a stipend would make it more pronounced and more definite.
Thank you.
Can I go next?
Sure, yep.
So, Dr. Gentry, we practically were on the same wave until that last comment. So, I have been saying for years, if we pay people, we will be able to get them here and keep them here. And the exact same argument you gave about folks getting different levels of degrees, why aren't we doing this for these folks too? Also, what happens if it's not embedded in their pay? When the annual raise comes around, that is not a part of the percentage that they will be increased in their pay. That's just wrong. Uh, as far as certifications, most people don't have to get those every year. And even if they did, how many people are we talking here that would have to report, okay, yes, I did do my certification, so my salary stays the same? If they didn't do their certification, this is as easy as hitting a button and saying, yep, your pay is going to be reduced. So, we need to be paying these people through their salary for the certification and for the license. These are professional individuals also. They need to be paid. So, stipend sounds good, but it's really, it's really to me demeaning to this group of individuals.
Most keep going around. Dr. Rontree?
Yeah, so that's a, that's an interesting debate that I have to contemplate it for a little bit. Uh, but one thing I noticed too, uh, is contractor licenses, you have C and B there. You don't have con, uh, class A contractors in the list. I, I assume that was because we only have C, so you just went up one level, but, uh, I would hate to have somebody that's saying that they would come and be a contractor for us and have a cu- class A, but not come because we're not offering them three thousand like we're doing master tradesmen. Because it, we just didn't expect to have them.
Correct. And we can add, we can add contractor class A to the list.
Okay. That's my only point.
Okay.
Thanks.
Mr. So.
Thank you so much, Dr. Brewster, for, um, this presentation. So, on the slide that says cost implications, you have, I think, thirteen people that you already identified would qualify for the stipend.
Absolutely, yes.
So, were this incentive to be implemented either as a stipend or as a, as a raise, about how many other employees might potentially be able to pursue different licensers and participate as well?
That, that's a good question because we only looked at the ones who were eligible for the license, but I'm sure that there would be others within that skill category who can pursue their license and also, I, I mean, we're not, we don't have a hundred percent of our electricians completely licensed at a master's level. So, that might have, you know, provided incentive for them to, you know, take, you know, step up, you know, from journeyman to masters, to be more qualified for their job.
Thank you.
Ms. Bond?
Okay, so, at what level? Because all tradespeople have to have a licensure, every one of us. So, even cosmetology, they're holding a license. So, how come they're not qualified for the stipend? And because most tradesmen, when we hire them, they're only getting, say, I've been doing here forty-two years. If I were to go into teaching, I would only get twenty-one and a half years of what I've done. So, you know, it, it's, it's already, you get knocked back just because you don't have the degree. So, the licensure I'm all about giving a stipend to, but every single tradesman has to have a license. So, is it a license that we're stipending or is it? Because I would think you have to have the license to even get a job with Montgomery County Schools in the trades, correct?
It, it's, um, yes.
I mean, that's, I mean, I, I can't imagine us hiring a cosmetology teacher that's not licensed. Or I can't imagine us hiring an electrician that doesn't hold a, an electricity license. I mean, they may not be the master electrician or someone may have a class C. But are you following?
I'm following, yes.
The same thing with even our welding teacher. I mean, from what I understand, students can't pursue to a certain level if their teacher doesn't hold a certain level of competence on the. Correct. So, that's, I guess that would be my question. At what point do we decide? This is what is, you have to have, but this is what is, you know, considered a higher step as assuming, just like a teacher and a masters. We don't hire teachers without adequate teacher's licensure. So, and it, or some type of something you've got to be working toward, whether it's the AMPS program or something. So, I understand our tradespeople are the same way. So, at what point do we consider it above and beyond to give a stipend?
I, I think a, a state license. If they achieve a state license for their, for their credential or their area or their job, I think that's what we considered.
Then it's going to be bigger than what's listed here. I mean.
We, we looked at, yeah, we, we looked at just the trades and operations is, is the two areas that we looked at.
It's like, for instance, I think, Ms. Bond, what you're asking is, these are our current employees and they all have the minimal, minimal qualifications to meet their job descriptions. Like, let's say a grounds person who works in grounds. He may not have the applicator license, all right? The applicator license is to put down pesticides and do all that. So, we want to incentivize that person. He has met the minimum requirements and certifications to have the job, but he doesn't have an applicator license. So, if he goes out and gets that applicator license, we're going to give you the stipend for a seven hundred and fifty dollars. I forget what it was. And the same when we have plumbers, but they're not master plumbers. We have some that are master plumbers and we want to differentiate and give them more. And one of the things I think that Dr. Gentry said and Ms. Franklin said, which is, which, which are accurate, if we want to keep these people that are in the trades and doing a really good job at the master level, right? Master mechanic, master plumber, whatever that may be, we should pay them and we should pay them at that level and it should be part of their salaries. And I don't think anyone here would disagree with that. The problem for us is in, we're in the middle of the year, kind of did the budget already, did all the salaries. I think what they're asking for is if they could do something now, but I think a larger picture would be to really look at those positions and saying, listen, if I'm hiring a master plumber, we're going to require that master certification to be considered for that job. And if you are at that level, we're going to pay you more where it's part of your VRS and it's all that. But I don't think you could do that in the middle of the year when that's why you looked at the financial implications. Is that correct?
Correct.
And understanding that completely. So, I accept that. But I guess my question is still even bigger than that. Our nurses have CNA licensures. They're not on the list. Cosmetologists have, I mean, it took me three years to get my state license. You know, a lot of times people think you can go and take a few classes and get it. That's not the way it works. But, and I have to renew it every single year. So, our cosmetology teacher does too. So, and she can go out and get a job anywhere with that license. So, it's the same as a master electrician, the same as a master plumber. So, I'm asking why, why are those folks not on the list as well? Are, are they?
We, we only looked at.
I know trades, but we're, I, I consider that a trades.
Yeah.
I mean, it's considered in the vocational program.
Correct.
Our career and technical education program. So, you know, that's.
Yeah, we, we didn't look at, at like existing teacher stipends. We didn't look at stipends. No, we, we looked at our operations, the people out, that were out doing the actual job of.
Oh, so you're not, you're not talking about, I thought you were talking about teachers that are doing this.
No, no, no.
No, 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 no.
This is for our plumbers.
Classified personnel.
Oh, 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 okay. I see what you're saying. Okay.
This is for our plumbers, electricians, yes.
I thought, okay. I'm, I'm sorry. I thought you were talking about the teachers who are teaching these, these courses.
No.
Oh, okay. Gotcha. Okay, well, then why did you reference the masters to that then?
As, as another, an example of another category of employee where there's a different pay rate based on their, uh, on their training. So, a teacher who has a master's degree has.
Right, but that's what I thought, that's what I thought you were alluding to, the fact that that's what I thought you were talking about, teachers.
I just use as an example of another employee. So, I, and just to add, so I understand we're in the middle of the year.
I know, I follow you now.
Yeah.
Yeah, I follow you.
So, I could support a stipend in the short term with the proviso that when we are doing the budgeting in, in the new year, that there, if, that, if we have a master's tradesman where we want to, we want to incentivize or encourage, that that be built into the pay scale. Now, if there are employees who are in a different category where, um, certification is in a qualification and we want to incentivize something that's more short-term, you know, something like that, 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 that be, that could be a stipend. But I want to ensure like, like for, for masters and not just for masters of education, but tradesmen or people in these categories that, that it's reflected in their pay for some of the reasons that were mentioned.
Certainly. When we looked at the school systems across the two regions, um, or excuse me, the two superintendent's regions, what we saw mostly was stipends. But there were a few, few school divisions that would increase the step for an employee having this certification. For example, if they were hired at step two, the certification would allow them to move to step three. So, we did look at, you know, some of those options as well. But we could certainly go back and look at, you know, what that might look like if it was embedded into the salary each year.
Want to come back and give Ms. Parton? She hasn't had a chance to talk yet.
It's okay. Yeah, you're fine. I'm all about the stipends and Dr. Bragan said exactly what I was thinking. I'm thinking that we didn't do this inside the scheme of the salary because the budget has already passed. So, we were trying to find a way at the moment to get these positions filled and keep these people there. Alluding to what Ms. Bond said, she is right about the CNAs and I was going to ask Mr. Walters if this wouldn't help transportation maybe with the mechanics and the CDLs for the bus drivers? Because I don't know how often those have to be renewed or.
They have to have a CDL.
But I think, I don't know how often they have to. Do they, is there any kind of renewal process with, with any of, any of that? Certification, maybe?
No, um, once you have your CDL, it's, it's pretty much treated like, of course, you have to take an annual physical and there's certain things that you have to maintain, but it's kind of, it's treated like your driver's license.
But now with the mechanics, would that help with our mechanics? Because that we're, we're still having issues with keeping, so I'm trying to look at transportation too as keeping retention there as well. Because I think we're trying to look at positions now. If I'm following you correctly, of the ones that are hard to fill and we're trying to get people, we're trying to fill it and get people to stay there.
Yes, ma'am. For, for the, uh, ASE master technician license as well as a state inspector's license.
Okay.
They're difficult to get. They have to be renewed each year. So, yes, that would definitely be beneficial.
That's what I thought.
I think we have five people in the transportation department with the sticker inspection license, correct?
Okay. And I know that's a lot of stickers to, I mean, that's a lot for, for even five people. But in talks with the stipend being a retention part building into the salary, why not start them out with the stipend and then use that as a retention base as if you stay with us for X amount of years and you continue to work for us, you might get that added into your salary, but use that as a onboarding method to get them here and some incentive to keep them current with their certifications and our needs, so to speak. So, it's a great idea.
Do you have, are going around once? Any other, any other comments or questions from board members?
Oh, yeah. So, again, when we were talking during budget and have been for several years, every year I talk about this. Every time that we have a, um, personnel update and those positions aren't being filled, what am I saying? If you pay them, they'll come. And again, I'm going to say, this is insulting to say, oh, let's dangle a carrot out here because we still can't get these done. We should have done it during budget. We should have done it during budget. And repeatedly, year after year, we don't. And then we get the same results and we wonder why. So, now we're going to throw a little incentive out there that could go away if we end up in a bad budget situation. Or like some other positions, all of a sudden we get them filled real good and those incentives slowly just kind of go away. The stipends have gone away. That has happened before. Um, so, yeah, we need to give these folks this, but we need to make sure we're including everybody.
That's what I was going to say next.
And I'm, I'm just not happy that we have come to this. When I saw this, I was like, you're kidding, right? Great idea. Let's give people more money, but let's give it to them for the everyday work that they do through their salary so that it rolls over and it counts every year when they're getting their salary increase. This is, this is just, this is just wrong. We've done this the wrong way for too long and we need to stop doing it. Constantly putting stipends out to folks when we can't get them to fill positions to try to rein them in instead of increasing their salaries like it needs to be. And shame. And shame on those other districts who are doing the same thing instead of paying people what they deserve.
I'm just going to make one more comment. Apologize for confusing the fire out of you. I'm sorry, I should have read all my details. But with that being said, I wouldn't mind if you at least get this going and on track, and then we can look at it as far as a pay, but also in corporate, because if our auto mechanics teachers are getting their master's ASE and inspection sticker certifications, they're no different. They're teaching our students how to do these things. So, I would like to see us have a conversation, because like I said, licensure people that we hire only get half of what their experience is when they become one of our teachers. So, it would be nice to see they're paying, I mean, I don't know if the school provides those, that licensure once, or how that works, but they're maintaining that, and they're getting their certifications, and that's a way to make sure that our teachers that are teaching our students, that are going out to do these jobs, to work for you, to, you know, work for you, I mean, they're qualified, and they're, they've got the licensures that they need as well. So, maybe that's the back burner that we can.
Certainly.
Thank you.
Take a look at that.
I guess I'd say we've kind of given you a wide range of feedback tonight. Not exactly sure, you know, what to do with it exactly, but I think this has definitely spurred a lot of good conversation, and, you know, I think, before we move forward with anything in this area, I think we want to probably see some other options.
Certainly. And I think we anticipated that we would, you know, be moving forward with looking at how we can improve on this, so.
Okay. Board, anything else on this one? Okay, great, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. And that brings us to board meeting discussions. The board will discuss a variety of topics, to include staffing update frequency, topics' monitoring schedule, and the length of school board meetings. And since Ms. Bond was the one that asked for this, I would be happy to let her start.
Okay, I was looking at the chart that is given to us, and with all due respect, the last meeting, I do felt like maybe there might have been a little bit of attention on me bringing this up, and that is not something that I meant, because I know just the one year that I did the vice chair, it's tough, and I can't imagine being chair, and I've said many times, it's a job that's, wow, and I do not want it. So, I know that you guys do the very best you can do to try to contain everything that this board and the public and the staff want into a little bit of amount of time, so, and it's, it's hard. And I think my argument is, yes, I understand there are things that we have to discuss and we have to talk about, but looking at the chart, there are 21 meetings, and I think it said that only 11 went past the, yeah, the meetings I highlighted, let's see, was it eight out of 21 meetings adjourned past 11:30? But 15 adjourned out of 21 adjourned after 11. So, yeah, some of them were 11:20, 11:17, 11:18, I mean, they're right at 11:30, so.
Ms. Bond, can I add something?
Yeah.
If you don't mind.
Go ahead.
And Mr. Chair, if you don't mind me adding something while Ms. Bond is speaking, I think for the normal person looking at this, and we have been doing better, so I commend you with that, so thank you very much, but I think most people think that our meetings don't start till seven. Most of these meetings are starting at 4:30 and 5 o'clock, and then going to this time. So, I think that part needs to be taken into consideration as well, because we've had very few meetings that I can remember to where we have actually started at 7 o'clock.
Right. And one of the things that I had shared was, we did talk about this in our board retreat, about how we didn't need to have a staff update, and I understand that it might only be 15 minutes, but 15 and 15 and 15, it all adds up. And I think one of the things that we can do, and I think part of the reason our staff has long presentations is because of us. They feel like they've got to cover everything they have to cover because of the questions that we ask at the meeting, and, and not saying that it's not important for our community to hear, but I think there are some things, and I, and I've had people say this to me, you got that in your board packet, and you could have looked at it prior too. So, I'm saying that now. There's lots of things we get in our board packet that people can ask questions about and be better prepared when they come to the meetings, and we talked about it, that our board retreat too. You know, it's, I looked up, and average of, I mean, even the curfew is 11 o'clock. I know it's students, but still, under 18, there's a cur, nobody's supposed to be out past 11 o'clock, and I just don't think we're conducive to anyone. And if it's something that important we need to be talking about, it should be on the front of the agenda, which I know you guys try to do that as well. So, I guess I just think, and if there is something, when we did COVID and we had that marathon meeting, that's an extenuating circumstance, and we have all kinds of situations with discipline, with other things, that the state law may require something unless there's an extenuating circumstance that you can prove. So, you know, I just think, long past my time, long past all the rest of his time, there's lots of people that don't even consider running for the school board or wanting to be a part because of the meeting times. And sure, people can watch it the next day on YouTube, but that doesn't, that doesn't mean our staff, who's got to come to work the next day after a 11:30 meeting, or us, or anyone who's affiliated. And I just think that's tough. I think that's, I don't think we should expect that, but.
Feel free to go around and just kind of share, share other perspectives on that. Ms. Pardon, you kind of jumped in there, did you have anything else to?
No, I just, basically, the timeframe that I was attesting to before the meeting kind of has more to do with just the board members' time, and I know how, and I know we've got a ton of things to do, but, you know, sometimes, I know, we feel kind of completely wiped out before we even get started some days, and, you know, and there's just some things that we just have to, we have to discuss that we can't delay, and, and I totally get that. I've been through COVID, I went through the marathon 14-hour meeting. It was god-awful, but it was something at the time that we, that we didn't have a choice of doing, and we had, we had 20 meetings in one month when COVID was going on. So, I mean, I get it. But in respect to our staff, our students, our teachers, our community, with wanting to come be a part of our meetings, or, you know, wanting to be there when the actual meeting's going on, or staying up to hear a decision or a vote, with it being as late, I'm just thinking, maybe we can find some proactive ways that we can try to, to try to make the meetings a little more productive as far as getting things, maybe not prolonging some things, maybe possibly leaving some things that aren't as important out. If something can be moved to another meeting, if our agenda's already really long and we can afford to do that, let's do that. And I don't, I don't feel comfortable making, and we voted on some pretty important stuff really late, and I don't think that that's a good idea for any of us to be voting on any, really, everything we vote on is important, so let me rephrase that. And so, we should be in a fresh, good state of mind when we are making decisions for, for our community and our schools when we're voting on things. So, we just need to sit down collaboratively, I guess, and try to figure out a way we can try to, try to reel things in a little bit, and what we can do to try to, try to fix this problem for everybody, because it does, it goes beyond just us. It, it goes out to everyone, and most people I know have to get up and work the next day, and it, it makes, it's hard. It's hard.
And before we go on to the next person, I was just going to clarify, I'm not talking about having a 9:30 or 10 o'clock meeting time. I'm talking 11 and 11:30, I think, after 11:30. I just don't think that that's conducive. I don't think we should, even if we have to reconvene, you know, in my 20 years of being on the board, I think I might have missed, I can count on one hand how many meetings I've missed that have been called separately or whatever. So, I have no problem meeting, or coming, or coming back. I just think after 11 o'clock, we don't make good decisions, we're tired, you're worried about going home. I just don't think we need to be here past 11:30. That, that's where I'm coming from with all of this.
Dr. Gitry?
So, I share the concern with the length of our meetings of a couple of points you looked over at me, and I would say that if, there may be a misunderstanding if you think that I ask questions because I'm not prepared. Because you said, you said, oh, okay.
Yeah, I was just looking around at all of them.
Okay, because you were looking at me when you.
Just happened to catch that moment.
Okay, okay. So, that's a different conversation for why I ask questions, because I know that I could ask questions before the meeting, but I'm doing it in part because I'm engaging with the public, and I know the public does watch, and so when I ask questions, particularly if I'm aware of an issue, it lets the public know, I'm listening to you, and I'm responding to you, and I'm doing my job. So, I think that one of the things that we can do fairly easily is that we do have a board policy related to meetings, and we do require that there be a vote if we extend it. I don't see why we can't move that time earlier, to set an expectation that we will end the meeting earlier, and we can extend it, but that act of requesting the extension is a moment where we could say, hey, we need to table, we need to bring this back, we need to have another meeting, rather than assume that it's okay, and we're pressed up and we're in close, in close meeting, and we're voting then. So, I think that that is one way of dealing with it, that we're setting an expectation, and that there's a conversation rather than an assumption, that it's okay if we're just going through 11:30 and after.
Ms. Franklin?
I don't like sitting here all night long or all morning long, just like anybody else. And in reference to that COVID meeting, that meeting would have been half the amount of time, had the administration not, at the last minute, sprung a whole new process that made no sense. We answered questions, the same question, two and three times, and there were, myself and another board member, were like, this is making no sense. So, and as far as asking questions, there have been many times when presentations haven't given the information that we need to make decisions, so we have to ask questions. And I've said this forever, because I've been accused in the past of not being prepared for meetings, because I ask questions. It's like, because the public is asking the same questions, and they want to hear the answers too, and they're not going to hear them unless we ask them also. So, we have business we need to take care of, and sometimes, if we're all thinking we have to say the same thing over and over again, each of us, it's okay to say, I agree.
Dr. Browntry?
I agree with that. Um, yeah, that, I think some of the things that do take out a lot of time is, when we're going around in a circle, the interruptions and discussions that happen that aren't in the process of going around the circle, really do add a lot, a lot of time to our meetings. I don't have a problem saying until we're done with what we have on our agendas. I, I don't like being past midnight, but sometimes we were past midnight. The, the item for personnel reports, we did actually decide, at least I understood that we decided during our retreat, that we would have personnel reports be in our, let me see, let me get the, our consent items. Thank you, thank you. No, no, personnel reports would be in the consent items, unless we decided that we needed to have it after the meeting. But we, we would decide that before, we'd have it in the closed session before the meeting. If there's no issues that anybody has, then we would be in the consent items, and if there is an issue, then there would be a discussion after the, during closed session afterwards, on a specific person or something of that nature. The staff reports, I do think are still very important. The, the amount of people that we need in our school system that we don't have, and what those percentages are that are classified personnel, and certified personnel, and so forth. So, I, I think that we really do need those, and I, I think that they, we need a monthly. It only takes a few minutes. But anyway, that's my two cents on the matter.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Rousseau?
I certainly would like us to have efficient, well-run meetings that address our responsibilities so that the division can, can function and thrive. Being part of agenda prep for the last eight months, we do try to prioritize things and take something or some things away. Often, that just means shuffling it to the next meeting, which might make that longer. Some things are time-sensitive, so they can't be pushed in that way. And I think when I look at these dates for meetings that have gone longer, it probably has to deal with time-sensitive items that we, we just needed to make decisions on, so that the, so that the division could, could function and move along. I have tried to educate myself and do some research and present ideas that might ameliorate some of these issues, like asking the division to put together a board monitoring calendar so that we just had our fixed presentations on a, on a regular basis. One, one example of how a calendar like that might solve problems and allow for things not to fall through the cracks, I believe it was our last meeting, Mr. Garantson gave us a safety update, and we hadn't, there hadn't been one since like March of '23 or '22, so it was, it was kind of overdue, and should probably be something that, that happens annually, and that we can just rely and, and for that position, it's like, hey, every first August meeting or last July meeting, that's, that's the safety update, or we get the facilities update this time of year and that time of year, whatever it might be. That's something that hasn't happened. Dr. Gitry suggested, I believe, in our retreat, having some committees to disperse some of the responsibility of meeting time, and that wasn't something that the board wanted to do, so that means we all get together and have extra closed sessions that makes our, makes our meetings longer. You know, I don't know, guys, present some, present some, some solutions to, to these problems so that we can, can work on it, because I think my, my concern when I look at, at the draft and try to set good priorities, when we meet in agenda prep, you know, I'm always worried about what, what's the thing that we're, we're forgetting that's going to fall through the cracks and then, and be a bigger problem later. That's, you know, something that I do worry about a lot when, when trying to, to set priorities. So, yeah, I guess that's my three cents there.
Yeah, so, I mean, I definitely appreciate the conversation, you know, we, we started this conversation during our retreat, and we had some ideas, and we've tried to implement some of them, but, you know, we can always, always get better, right? So, you know, I'm not a, you know, as far as I'm concerned, I take my direction for how we want our meetings to run from, from the will of board, right? And, you know, certainly, one thing that we've been very intentional about since our board retreat was how we structure our meetings. So, you know, I'm sure you've probably already noticed, but we're very deliberate now when we put the order of our meeting, right? So, we, we like to start with anyone who's, who's coming in to present from outside the division, right, just to be respectful, whether it's students, or outside companies, or parents, or whatever else, so we always try to get them first. And then we try to do any of our, any of our, our votes earlier now, so we're not taking votes. So we're not taking votes after 11 or whatever, right? And then we're saving to the end, any kind of just presentations, informational kinds of stuff, right? So, yeah, I'm trying to be respectful of that. But I mean, I stand a better chance of winning the lottery than I do trying to predict how long our meetings are going to go, right? I mean, our last agenda was way longer than this one. And yet we're probably going to get done later tonight. And, you know, it's a coin flip, right? I mean, you can only, only do so much, you know? As board chair, I said this at the retreat, I'll say it in public, you know, as board chair, one thing that I, that's important to me is to make sure that everyone has a chance to speak and share their thoughts and their concerns. Whether it's, you know, just to kind of share the concerns that they're getting from their constituents or to weigh in on things that are important to them. You know, when I joined the board, we didn't go around and ask, right? It was just a free for all, right? And so the loudest voices spoke the most. And I sat over there beside Penny and every once in a while we get a word in edgewise, right? So, I mean, I, I, I thought it was important for us to adopt how the board supervisors does it, which is going around, calling, giving people turns and stuff like that. And I feel like that has been good from a people getting, being able to participate, particularly our newer board members. But it does, it takes longer, right? I mean, I definitely agree with, I think Ms. Franklin said, you know, if you don't have anything to say, you don't have to say something, right? It's okay, right? You don't have to repeat something that's already been said. And I feel like we've, we've all gotten better at that, but, you know, I don't want to be the board chair who sits over here with a stopwatch, I see one sitting back here, and time my fellow board members on how long they're speaking. That's not how I want to govern. But, I mean, I do think that as a group, we've gotten better at trying to be, trying to be more concise. But, you know, there are times when a topic is going to be passionate to someone, whether it's, you know, Ms. Bond. You know, there was a nutrition topic a while back and you had a lot to say on that, right? And that's good for you. And if it's school safety or school policy, whether it's, you know, hate speech policy, whatever it is, right? I mean, I think it's important for us to, us to, to share our thoughts on that, so. But, you know, I don't, I think it's a, it, it probably is a good idea for us to, to review that policy about, you know, the end time. And when we take that though, I, I don't know when that policy was set, but I feel like it's something that we should be able to change. Right? But we could make it earlier, right? We're not stuck at that, we just can't go past that, right? So. But, I mean, certainly from, as your board chair, I'm very mindful of trying to, to get these agendas as concise as I can. You know, there are presentations that board members ask for. There are timely things that we have to deal with and it can be challenging to get all that in here. I do really like the idea of, call it a board monitoring schedule or whatever you want to call it, whereby, you know, we as a board can make some of the decisions about how frequently we want to, we want to get the personnel updates. How often we want to get updates on facilities or safety plans or whatever it is. And then as a group, we spread that stuff out and we kind of know in advance when to expect it. The administration knows when to expect it. And, you know, we're not trying to cram a bunch of that stuff into a meeting before the school year ends because we forgot to get around to it, right? So. Definitely open to any ideas around that and any other suggestions.
Well, and I like the idea of doing a little earlier with the voting. And, and I think too, you know, as a board member, I think for a long time I was afraid to vote no to extending because it would make me look like I wasn't representing my community the way I needed to. Because this is what I'm supposed to be doing and I was voted in to be at a meeting. But then I think I realized that just because I'm voted in to do a job doesn't mean I need to do it all night long. And at the same time, and would be more than willing to say, okay. You know, this is not something that is, is bearing down, we've got to have. And I, I would like to see our board be willing to vote no to extending a board meeting more so than I think we have done in the past. I think that's where I'm coming from, is us to share going, yeah, you know what? Okay, so we've got this and this and this and that's not going to, you know, the world's not going to end on these, these three issues from a quarter till 11 till a quarter till 12. So as a board, let's, let's come together and vote to, to not extend that meeting. And I think that's, and we have done that from time to time, we've gotten better at it. But in the beginning, eh, we kind of weren't. And, and I'm guilty of not being that person, but now I think I've grown to think, yeah. We're not, we're not doing anybody any favors by meeting and voting and discussing anything past 11:30. It's not helping anyone. So, you know, that's why my whole intent of this is, because, you know, I listen to the community that's just like, oh, good gosh. What are you guys doing? And like I said, then that's when I realized, yeah, you know what, what are we doing? And, and it wasn't a nine or 9:30 or 10 o'clock or 10:30. I'm talking past 11:30. I'm, I'm talking late and we do have that voting policy. And maybe if we do it at 11, that would make a better kind of guideline to go by to realize, hey, let's, let's pull it in, let's reel it in.
Any other thoughts to share or any specific actions any board members wants to, wants to suggest tonight?
So. Go.
Sorry, thank you. I think on that issue, if there's a consensus of the board, then there's no reason why we, we can't ask that, that policy be revised. So that, that we do, and, and I just want to make it clear, it is, it is not to impose anything on the, the chair. But just to say as a board, that if we are going to extend beyond, say, 11 o'clock, if we do make it earlier, that there's a consensus of the board that, that we should do that. And, and so maybe when you're structured, and I appreciate very much that you have restructured so that we're, we're moving things forward. And it would be some, something that when you are working on the agenda, okay, there's something that we, we would like to get to. But if it's not critical, that it comes later so that, you know, if we do have a lot of the agenda. So I would be curious to know if there is a consensus on the board of, of changing that policy to move that time back, to move that time to 11 o'clock. That if there is an extension beyond 11, that, that'd be by the, the will of the board.
Can we get a show of hands on that? Who's willing to, to make that change?
It's just for a vote, it's not to.
Yeah, I'll go in.
Okay. Great. The second thing, thank you very much. The thing also I wanted to mention is yes, there was an agreement. And I think it maybe was a little unclear if you, the two of you were going to collaborate on, on presenting to the board options for making it a consent item. I remember that, so, but is it something that the, the administration should bring to the board on how to pursue that, to enact it? Because we've already made a decision that we should do it, it's just the logistics. So is that something that, because I think if I remember correctly from the retreat, that you were going to work on some proposals of, of just how we enact that.
I mean, I'd be happy to hear from Dr. Brayden. I think I couldn't get my arms around mechanically how it would work, right? Because we can't amend the agenda after the meeting has started to add a, add a closed session topic. But we wouldn't know until after the meeting started whether we needed to or not. So I just wasn't sure how we could handle that. So, so instead, what we've started doing obviously is having the, the personnel reports in a closed session before the meeting. And just having the conversation there. And I think the board has done a good job at being, being more concise in those conversations as well, which feels like it has solved the issue, but if we want to consider the other alternative. I'm up for it if we can figure out how to mechanically do it.
I remember that the SBA represent, the, the, the facility that we, facilitator we had said that in her district, they had done that. So there must be a way to, to do that while still complying with Robert's rules.
Yeah, I mean, I.
We'll have to look into it, I didn't do that research.
Okay. I mean, do we feel like? I guess, do we feel like the way it's working right now is still not, not optimal? You know, we're not discussing the personnel report at 11 o'clock and we're not having to come out after open session and take a vote on it because we've already done that at the beginning of open session, so. Which was, was meant to help address those late nights, right? It does require us to start, you know, so we have had a closed session before our open sessions every meeting since that, right? In order to do that, but typically that's 6:30 unless we have other things and, and we've had other things.
Yeah. I mean, I would feel, I, I appreciate that. Since the, the, the board did express its will, I would at least like to get a proposal from the administration. If they, if the administration comes back and says, well, it's going to be complicated and it's going to extend the meeting in X, Y, or Z. As, you know, if, if there isn't an efficient way of doing it, then I suppose having it in closed session beforehand is something we could continue to do. But at, at this point, there's just an absence of information.
You'll take that action?
Okay.
What else?
So I'll just say, I don't think the personnel report is the big issue, that why our meetings go long. But one of the things we did discuss and Ms. Purcell actually put together a list, and I have been bringing this up for the last about five years because we kind of got out of the cycle of how things are reported to the board. Because there are deadlines that things need to be reported to the state and to the feds. And when we get SOL scores and all this stuff, it doesn't just happen anytime. It happens every time, same time every year. And from what I recall, the administration had also put together a list. And they were supposed to try to work with the two, between the two lists and come up with a cycle for us to go on. Because we did it for many, 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 many years. And then it just stopped. And it's helped create backlogs with agendas. And again, I believe it was during COVID because it was just so much stuff that needed to be addressed. And other stuff just kind of got pushed aside. And a lot of that was because we weren't really in school and the reporting didn't need to happen like it was happening, like it was happening. So to me, that would help the situation a whole lot. And for us just not to go over and over and over.
I mean, my take from that conversation at the retreat. I don't think we did a good job as board leadership kind of presenting that to the board to make an informed decision on that. It kind of came kind of late and, you know. I know that Ms. Purcell put a lot of effort into that, in getting that thing together, but we kind of got it to you guys last minute. And so I got the impression that board members weren't, didn't have enough information to kind of make a decision as to whether they wanted to move forward with that. But I agree, I would, I would like to recommend that we revisit that and, and, and get board member input, administration input, and, and get that schedule put together, I think it would really help us.
And as I recall the scenario. What I, I made that Friday night was kind of based on needs that I heard expressed during the day in the meeting. And then, you know, some training that I had had where, where there was a model policy that I, that I saw that did, that did something similar. But what, what we would need is the, the division to bring us, you know, what they, what they need, because I don't know all the reporting deadlines, federal deadlines, grant.
Yep.
Lines, other regular things to prioritize.
We roughed something out, I know Ms. Osborne, we worked on that. So we'll present something to all you that combines the two of them, get your thoughts on it. We just haven't had a chance really to talk in a meeting about it.
Sure, of course. Can I get a show of hands, just to make sure that the will of board is interested in pursuing such a schedule calendar? Okay.
In preparing that material, I'm recalling the, the exchange that we had about, about the safety update and it was supposed to happen like every three years. I think what would be helpful when you're working on that is to look at our policy because multiple policies have schedules of when we're supposed to review those policies or activities within those policies. And so that was one of the things when, when that was first presented, it, it came from the board. But I think that when we're looking at an actual schedule, it shouldn't just be an annual schedule. That you should look at the, look at the policies. And so if there's supposed to be an update or review that happens, say, every three years. That we're, we're, we have a, a longer time, you know, a window so that we're responsive to make sure that we're doing the things that we say that we need to do in our policies.
It makes sense? Okay, great. Okay, so I think we have a couple of actions there, which is great. Any other conversation or requests? Okay, great. Ms. Bond, do you feel like that was sufficiently addressed?
Awesome.
All right. All right, and that brings us to unfinished business. Are there any items of unfinished business?
Yes, so. Yep, previously we had asked the administration to bring a policy for monitoring for disparities of outcomes and opportunities as a standalone pro, policy as it was moved, removed from the code of conduct. And I was just wanting to make sure that that is on the agenda, or in the plans. And what kind of timeline we would expect to be able to see that policy.
We talked about that as an administrative team not that long ago. And they're looking at putting that together in September. And maybe getting some specific feedback from all of you on what you want to make sure is included in that. So we'll know that before we begin working on it. But I did talk to the administrative team about that recently. And looking to get started on that in September, wanted to open school and get all that done first.
Thank you.
So can I add to that for, so part of the information that also needs to be included with that, if it's not someplace else, is, I think it was our May 6 meeting when we moved to have several things included, not just that one particular piece. That all of those things that the board said they wanted included in that policy or code is captured.
Okay, we have that. Okay. Yeah, because that was a will of the board on that one, so. Anything else for unfinished business? Okay. Any items of new business?
On July 31st, the Virginia Department of Education voted unanimously to approve the New River Valley Governor's School for Arts and Humanities at Radford University. And I hope that that is an opportunity that we will provide for our students. So hopefully we'll see that on a, on an agenda so that
Yep.
Kids can take advantage of that. So I did want to, I can say more about it, I guess, during, during announcements. I also, I had a brief conversation with Dr. Widener before our meeting. This evening that we may want to consider a calendar adjustment for October 24th, which is a Friday and it is a televised home football game for Virginia Tech. What I heard in my work meetings today was that the campus may be closing at noon to accommodate for the excitement and, and traffic and whatnot that the, that that event may cause. And the division may want to consider having an early release for that day as they typically do during the weekday games.
So let me be clear, this is a televised game. And what would be, why would we need to close early?
It's a Friday and just more people will be coming into town and it typically.
Televised game?
I believe so. I believe so. I that's, I don't know. I'm just repeating what I.
In the in the times I've been here, when they had a a night game, it was usually during the week, it was usually Thursday night, and that we would have a a release day. We tried to coordinate, if you remember on the calendar, which was an arduous task in approving. But on the calendar, we had the fall break, we thought aligned to where Virginia Tech usually has that game on a Thursday night. It happens to be on a Friday, but it's the following week now. So. Yeah, but it's 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 a weeknight game during the week. It's not a Saturday. So that's what we're concerned about. If they're doing it on a, you know, they start at 6:30, 7 o'clock at night, and people are going to start arriving at noon, and they're going to want to park, and they're going to kind of tie up all Blacksburg, especially we use some of our schools for parking. So I think that's a legitimate concern. And the board has to decide, if you're asking me, and I'm leaving, so I'm not going to be here. But we put that in the calendar in October. We did the fall break. I forget the dates off the top of my head, 16, 17. We had a teacher work day, then we had a day with no school because we thought the game would be that time. We didn't have the schedule yet. Schedule comes out, the game is the following Friday night. Oh, no, no, it's it's in person. But the fact that it's like a, it's like an ESPN game. There'll be more of a crowd because it's a national game.
Okay.
We we anticipated bringing something back to all of you with a suggestion for the calendar.
Ms. Purcell, in terms of the governor's school, is there an opportunity to have have representatives from that program come present to the board? Is that what they were doing to other counties? Is that an option for us to come present as a part of our decision to participate?
I think that's a good idea at this point.
Yeah. Cool. I think that'd be helpful.
Yeah. There's a new item in business I wanted to bring up, and I'll and I'll keep this brief. Someone in the county brought up to me a concern about how we calculate our grades for our AP courses. And Dr. Bragan knows about this. So we have a policy, 663, recognition of student academic achievement. So there's a policy that covers advanced courses. And the the way that it works now is that, so there's an additional point if you're taking an AP course. But the way that the student GPAs are calculated, it's not on the number, if that bump is not correlated with the number of AP courses that student take, that students take, but on 32, it's a set number that they'll reach at the end of their senior year. And so one of the concerns that was expressed is that basically at that point, it doesn't do our students any good who are relying upon that for the application process. So the the bottom line is that we're miscalculating the grade, the GPA for students who take AP courses while they're applying to colleges. And so in the exchange with Dr. Bragan, there there were concerns about, you know, there might be other factors. And so there was a proposal for a committee. And I know that there's a committee that's been formed. I'd like to see that process expedited so that we're, because from my perspective, we should be calculating GPAs accurately to to reflect what the students are earning in courses. So it's something that I'd like for the 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 board to to take up.
It was brought to our attention by a community member, too. And when we started looking into it, there's a history there. I don't know all the history, but I know that when we make this change, it's going to increase some students' GPA and decrease others. So rather than just make that change, although it seems like it could be common sense, I thought we should really get a committee together and weigh all those factors. And that's where we're at now. So I'll try to ask our secondary administrative team to update where we are in that process.
Do you have a sense for when you might expect that to come back to the board? Or is it?
Well, I'll I'll ask tomorrow and see where that is.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Yep.
One additional item. I'd like to see us codify in our policy accessibility items at our schools, especially during events. So like back to school nights, for example, elevators and whatnot should be unlocked and anyone can use them during those periods of time. Of course, there will be staff to make sure students aren't abusing the the elevators during that time. But anybody that that needs to use one or during that time period wants to use one should have the ability to utilize the elevators. And in no way in or at no point in time should we have people that need access to those resources having to try to track down how to get access to those resources. So if we could get that codified in our policy, if if it's the will of the board to to have that codified, I'd appreciate it. And a policy brought to us to to say that we we will have those unlocked when there there's those types of events. For reference, I I think a lot of the public knows our students that need access to those, they have cards that that allow them to go up to the elevator and go in the elevator whenever they need them. So that during the day, this is a this is taken care of in a in a good, well-managed method. But during these special events, we we have had issues with it in the past.
Understood. Makes sense. Okay, great. Anything else, Board? All right. Are there any announcements? Let's go first.
So dialogue on race will have its summer summit this Saturday, the 23rd, at Huckleberry Park. Encourage everyone to attend. Good stuff.
Dr. Roundtree, do you have something? Okay, sorry. Ms. Purcell?
I just want to thank the administration and all of the teachers and staff members for a really successful back to school. Seems like things are are going relatively smoothly. And, you know, Dr. Bragan addressed this in his superintendent's report as well. So thanks for all of your hard work for making that happen. I did send out an email to the board about this, about the new the the governor's school. But I just wanted to share publicly, I attended the presentation in Richmond on July 30, that Dr. Danilowicz at Radford University, Rob Graham from Pulaski Public Schools, and Roxanne Suma from Pulaski Public Schools presented. But there were about 10 of us from Southwest Virginia that that attended. Initially, the the VDOE had planned to have that as a as a first read and then vote on it in August when they met. But they asked to push the vote up to the next day because there was unanimous support, because they were so excited to to support this program. The the governor was excited to have this as an accomplishment that occurred while he was still still in office. So it was just really wonderful to to play a small, small role in in that and to see the the enthusiasm of the VDOE to support it, as well as the the folks that traveled to Richmond that day to express the needs of Southwest Virginia, which I don't think is something that they hear all that often. So.
Ms. Bond?
I don't have any announcements, other than I know it's Dr. Bragan's last meeting. And I just want to say thank you for everything you've done. I know we touched on it the last meeting and but once again, just wish you the best in your next endeavor. And we'll miss you. And you've you've done a lot of good for our our county and brought a lot of new ideas. And and I appreciate everything you've done for us and and wish you the best.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Ms. Farden?
So I just want to thank everybody again for the successful ribbon cutting at CHS. There was a bigger turnout than I thought would be, but it was wonderful. Very proud of it again for everybody involved and and everything, the way it's come together and and the excitement by the students and the staff and everything. And thank you to all of our teachers and staff for getting our kids back to school and our bus drivers for getting there there safely and trying to get this year started on a positive note from from what we have received, the feedback. It sounds like everything has been going great so far. So hopefully, that can continue. And I am going to, for the sake of time, say I agree with Ms. Bond. I could say more, but I agree. But no, thank you, Dr. Bragan, for everything you've done. You will be missed, and I appreciate all your hard work and everything that you have inspired not only our faculty, staff, and students to do, but everything you've implemented and continue to implement in a positive way to to keep us going. And hopefully, we can get somebody in here that'll keep the train on the tracks and keep us moving forward. So thank you so much for everything and wish you the best and don't be a stranger.
Thank you.
Dr. Gentry?
I will keep this brief. Welcome back, everybody. I deeply appreciate of all the effort that has gone in from so many people to for a successful beginning of the the school year. Yes, thank you, Dr. Bragan, for your service. I know that's an incredibly difficult position to be in, superintendent of any division but one of this size and complexity. I I wish you the best moving forward.
Thank you. All right. I'll jump in there real quick as well. I I did not say anything kind words to Dr. Bragan the last meeting. I was going to wait until the very end, squeeze every every drop of juice out of that orange there. But definitely want to say thank you for all of his hard work with us. We are a better district, having had him here with us. I believe that wholeheartedly. We've got an amazing administrative team over here that he has helped build and is going to carry us into the future, doing a lot of great things. And definitely, good luck in your future. Don't be a stranger and come on back and see us sometime.
Thank you. I really appreciate all the kind words. Thank you very much.
All right, Board. Upcoming school board meetings are listed in Board Docs. Our next regular session is September 2. And with that, do I have a motion to enter into closed section, closed session as authorized by Section 2.2-3711 of the Code of Virginia to discuss a personnel matter and student matters?
So moved.
Second.
Dr. Gentry and Dr. Roundtree, any discussion? Ms. Staley, please call the roll.
Ms. Bond? Ms. Franklin? Dr. Gentry?
Yes.
Ms. Parton?
Yes.
Ms. Purcell?
Yes.
Dr. Roundtree?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Seven in favor.
Motion carries.